Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Hayden's regular city council meeting is Tuesday, June the 24th. Calling the meeting to order is approximately 5:01 PM. May we get a roll call of council members, please?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest.
Yes.
And Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Ed, you want to lead us on the pledge?
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm not noting any additions or corrections to the consent calendar or to the agenda tonight. We'll move on to the consent calendar, which consists of approving June 10, 2025 city council meeting minutes, approving part concessions agreement and permit application with Richie's Dog House, approving payments to 2025 Hayden's Cut Talent winners, approval of purchase and sale agreement with the Rad Properties for Ramsey Road Extension Project, considering authorizing the mayor to sign engagement letter with Alpine Summit to complete our fiscal year 2024 audit, and approval of bills for payment. Any questions on the consent calendar items listed? Anyone would like to make a motion?
I motion that we approve the consent calendar stated 1A through 1F.
Second. Motion is second. Any questions on the motion being made? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Any visitor public comments tonight?
None submitted.
Okay, there are none submitted. We're going to move on. Mr. Ian Cosby, who heads our Veterans Commission, is going to give us a report tonight. Right on the, there's a little target with the trap door.
Hi, I'm Ian Cosby. I'm the chairman for the City of Hayden's Veterans Commission. And over the past three months, we've did vetting for our speaker that we had for Memorial Day. We ensured that all the resources and everything was taken care of, all the planning for the Memorial Day service. And the Memorial Day service, we got a lot of comments that it was, everyone thought of it really well, really liked the speaker. I think he was one of the best that we've, we've ever had, which was amazing. And so we, we ensured the honor guard, taps, and rifle team support were for both the submariner ceremony as well as the primary general ceremony here. We wrote down some sustains and improves, or some of the, some of the stuff of what we're trying to do. So we want to sustain the use of curved seating arrangement during the ceremony as an improved visibility for people and just gave a very nice, kind of more connected feel. The, we also want to continue building continuity documents for future ceremonies led by the Veterans Commission. So as I'm noting, sustains and improves for each service, we want to have a centralized location that we've, will be working with the city to maintain a document that's available to city employees, things like that. And improve, we wanted to, next year, we want to improve synchronization of actions during the ceremony. The present projects that we're working on include the Hayden Days. It's, it's not really a project. We're just planning to support the Hayden Days with the, the city and the things that they request for the commission to do. And for future projects, we're looking at continuing to, to build that, the continuity documents, as I said earlier, then also developing a plan for creating a publicly available map of the memorial bricks that are out front that is indexed and searchable, so that it's a more usable space where people can come and like, oh, I know my uncle is honored here, but I can't find him. So we want to build an indexed thing that people can search through and then be able to find where they're associated, where it is.
Come see me about that if you don't mind. I've got, I think I've got a way for that to be easier.
Okay, great. And that is all I have pending any questions.
Any questions for you? Thank you. Go ahead.
I'd just like to say that I really appreciated the Memorial Day service and I liked the new seating with us, with them down on the ground level, and your choice of speaker was excellent. It was very moving. Thank you.
Do, does the Veterans Commission have a webpage where people can access it, or?
It's a single page that the Veterans Commission itself has not given authorization to at this time to make updates to, but the city maintains a page that has kind of some really basic information on it.
Would it be an idea, just to toss around, that we, we do put the names of all the pavers on that page if people want to see and, you know, who's out there, what, who, who's been memorialized out there? Is that something that?
Yeah, Matt, that was, that was what I was going to chew on with Ian.
Okay, okay. Thanks. Anything else?
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move on to new business. Our first item is acceptance of the fiscal year 2023 financial audit. There's a cover letter with the recommended acceptance, but I believe before that happens, we need to have a brief so we can ask questions. Welcome.
Thank you.
See you again.
I'm Tony Cafford with Alpine Summit CPAs. We performed the financial statement audit for your September 30th, 2023 audit and just have a brief presentation here. Stop me at any time. You did, first of all, I want to thank Lisa, Jennifer, and all the other staff that assisted with getting this completed, so a lot of hard work. You did receive a draft financial statement and within that, now finalized it, and within that, though, the most significant change was we were working through a resolution of some capital asset accounting and we have rectified that or resolved that, I guess is the right word. And so there is not a finding related to that. There was initially going to be a finding related to that. So just, that's the most significant change before, between the final report. As a result of our audit, we issued three different reports. One is an independent auditor's report, and this is a report over your financial statements as a whole. And the report is an unmodified report, also referred to as a clean report, meaning that we were able to audit your financial statements and feel that they are materially correct. So that is the report that was issued there. We also have to issue a report, an independent auditor's report on internal control over your financial statements and compliance and, and regulations related to financial purposes. We did have one finding related to this, and this was due to the audit not being completed timely. The state and the federal government required that you have it completed within nine months. There were a lot of issues or reasons that this did not get accomplished. You had a big change, a lot of change in your personnel, and it's a very large task to step in and do that position. So the finding will be a repeat for 2024 since that financial statement's due Monday. But working and talking with Lisa and Jennifer, we feel that we won't have that issue going forward. Then there is one more report. You did have over $750,000 in federal funding for that year, so we had to do some testing on compliance related to that funding to make sure you were in compliance. So we issue an independent auditor's report on compliance over that. And again, as I just referred to, the only finding there was the timeliness of the report. So everything else, though, all the compliance requirements for that program report in check. Now I'll just go through the financial statements, page four through six. These are what's called your government-wide financial statements. They're basically presented as a for-profit business would present on the full accrual basis of accounting. So all of the capital assets and other assets of the city are presented there as where, as well as liabilities and long-term liabilities of the city. You operate more on a fund basis with current assets and current liabilities, and that's how you do your budgeting. So those financial statements are really more relevant, and those are on pages seven and eight and 10 and 11. Seven and eight is your balance sheet for your governmental funds, which the major fund is your general operating fund. And here you can see on page seven that the general fund had 11.469 million in assets and you had 847,000 in liabilities, and then you had some deferred inflows of resources of 1.3. Those are revenues that you've received that you have not yet spent the money for the, those purposes yet. So your assets less your liabilities is your fund balance, and your fund balance at your end was 9.29 million for the general fund. You do have some other major funds which are presented here, your impact fees, circulation fund, and then your capital projects funds. Those are your major funds. And then you have several other smaller funds that are reported in the back of the financial statements that are not presented in the front of the financial statements. Page 10 is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and your change in fund balance. You'll see the general fund had revenues of 8 million, expenditures of 5.6 million, and a resulting net change in fund balance, which net income, if you were talking for-profit, but they call it change in fund balance for governmental's. 1.789 million was your change in fund balance. So your net result of ending fund balance is the 9,290,000. And your impact fee circulation fund actually had a loss of 277,000, but that's based on timing and transfers for that fund. And then the capital projects fund also kind of timing information and that had a negative or a loss of 662,000. Okay. So pages 13 through 15. This is your sewer fund, and it, the first statement is your statement of net position, balance sheet in the for-profit world, where it shows your assets, both your current assets and your capital assets, and then your liabilities, current liabilities, and then also your long-term liabilities, your long-term debt. And so your assets less your liabilities is your net position, and you have a net position of 3.1 million in your sewer fund. And I'm going over September 30th, 23, if I didn't say that to begin with, but. Page 14 is your statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in your net position for your sewer fund and your, you have a net income or a net change in net position of $2 million this, in 2023. So your resulting ending net position was 3.1 million. In the prior year, you actually had a net operating loss of 2.9 million for the sewer fund, but that was related to the Harsby wastewater treatment plant facility, where you had 4.8 million in expenses in that year. Pages 18 through 40 are the notes to the financial statements, so they just explain your accounting policies, give you a little bit more explanation of your capital assets, your liabilities, and things of that nature. I'm not going to go through every page there. Page 41 is your budget to actual for your general fund. Your budgeted net change in fund balance was a loss of 241,000, which you have fund reserves or fund balance that would account or take care of that. But your actual change of fund balance, like I spoke of, was actually net income or net positive change fund balance of 1.789 million. Your interest income in 2023 was 782,000 higher than in 2022, and your license and permits income are 288,000 higher than in 2022. Pages 45 through 48 are financial statements of your non-major, what they call non-major funds, like the impact fees for police and parks and council media center, so different smaller funds of the city. And that is all that I have for you. I'd happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Tony?
I do have one, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Based on our, this is, this is a while ago. Usually within an audit, it will say how many days we can sustain and pay for our expenses if we had no income. Do you state that in here?
I do not, and I did not calculate that for you. I usually have a presentation, a slide presentation that shows graphs and such, but I figured since this was old and
All right.
Old news that I didn't do that this time, but I will do that for your 2024 audit.
Thank you. Any other questions? Tom?
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to be referring to the end out that we received prior to the meeting because this we just got now.
Correct.
So one of the things I, I, that drew my attention was under assets, cash, cash equivalents, investments. And can you tell me, I don't want to like grill you on the details because, you know, it'd be a waste of time here, but can you tell me or point to me where in here I could see the breakout of that?
That breakout?
Well, for example, if I read it correctly, and I'm, I'm reading from one of the first pages in the end out we got before the meeting, cash and cash equivalents, 9.873 million dollars. So it's a curiosity for me exactly how that is held.
What page is that that you're looking at?
Okay, bear with me, please. That would be page six of 56.
Page six, did you say?
Page four, Tony.
Oh, page four?
Is it page four? Okay, I'm, I'm referring to the electronic copy that we received, so.
Okay. I want to make sure that I understand your question. Are you asking where those funds are held?
Yeah, is there more detail in this document of where they're held?
Yes, on page 25. It shows you a breakdown of what's held in cash and cash equivalent funds.
And I'm still.
Okay.
Ah, okay, all right. I'll dog ear that one.
Yeah, so it shows the carrying amount of your cash and cash equivalents and investments. So cash and cash equivalents are the 21 million that you held in equivalent, cash equivalent accounts. Investments were 2.549. And then you have restricted cash and cash equivalents, and those are related to mostly your impact fees funds, where they have to be spent for particular purposes.
That answered another question I had. I have a follow-up, if I may. This is as of September 30th, 2023, on that date, all these numbers are based on that.
Correct.
When, when do we get our tax money from the, from Kootenay County? Does that come in relating to?
January and July.
And July, so July, we would have had a good half of our taxes paid to us. So there's, to, to, just to think about that, then we would have a pretty healthy balance in our accounts because it isn't like it's the end of that six months of when we got paid.
Correct.
Okay.
And then the state funding comes in quarterly, so it doesn't come in monthly either, so.
Right. So timing on that has an effect on these numbers tremendously.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. I appreciate it. Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone in council like to make a motion?
Sure.
Thanks, Ed.
I'd motion to accept the fiscal year 2023 financial audit.
Okay, is there a second? Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion being made? May we get a roll call vote, please?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to action number 4B, which is to consider the highest bid offer to sell our Dakota Street property and authorize the mayor to sign purchase and sale agreement to the public's knowledge. We went out with a sealed bid to sell our Dakota property. We had wanted at least, I think it was 1.48 mil, and our highest bidder came in at 1.74 mil. So they've exceeded that, and unless council has any questions, we just need to authorize to sign the purchase and sale agreement. Any questions?
I'll go ahead and make a motion, then.
Thanks, Ed.
Yeah. I would motion to, how are we doing this, approve?
You need to accept the bid and then authorize the mayor to sign the purchase and sale.
So the first motion's going to be to accept the bid.
No, if you read the draft motion, I think I provided for you in the memo, I think it does pull the back motion.
I have, could you hold our hands?
I have staff, I have staff recommends acceptance of highest bidder bid of 1.4, or it's 1.740191.
And authorizing the mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement, is that not on there?
No.
I don't have it. I had it up and then I went to a different screen, so.
You want to, oh, in one motion?
You, you can.
Okay, so let me see if I can get this right. Part one, I would, I would motion that we accept the highest bid of 1.7401,741,91 dollars and approve.
Authorize the mayor.
Authorize the mayor to sign.
Purchase and sale agreement.
Purchase and sale agreement.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Is there any discussion for the motion being made? May we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Okay, our last item, new business, is a resolution to adopt an amendment to our consent agenda process. I will brief council that this was a resolution that I asked for from staff and received reasonable pushback on because it is not required. Idaho has a law, we will follow the law, at least as long as I'm the mayor, but given the consternation we had over the consent agenda process and ordinances that were 20 years old, I felt it was wise to not set the stage for that to happen again 20 years from now. So that is the purpose of the resolution. Resolution does not need to duplicate language found in law. We obviously follow the law in Hayden. And with that, I will turn it over to council for discussion.
Okay, I'll, I'll, some discussion here. Yeah, as, as the mayor mentioned, there has been, consternation's probably a good word. Seems like about a year or so it's been going on, related to the consent calendar and the requirements of the consent calendar, whether it needs to be unanimous consent or whether prior to this, a single council member could by request and an item must have been removed. The city, to my knowledge, was operating its inception, okay, fine with the resolutions related to the consent calendar. Basically, we all had, had and have had the opportunity by simply communicating with the mayor prior to if we would like something on or off or moved or whatever, and that seemed to have worked quite a bit. So there's no secret here that I have had issues with this and its motivation. So I'm going to read a little statement, and then I'm going to pass it, this written statement be, I'm going to submit it to be put in the minutes. So here we go. As somewhat of a precedent has been set over the last few years, I'm going to read a statement to ensure complete transparency about this particular issue. So let's start from the beginning. For a long time, a council member was claiming during meetings that the consent calendar required unanimous consent, which is not true. Then the same council member claimed that it was required to remove a consent counter item if one council member requested to do so. That was also not true. How do we know these claims were not true? Because first, the council member went to local state legislators and had them create a bill, which was House Bill 103, that would add a sentence to the state statute 74-204 that would require unanimous agreement on all consent counter items. I have to ask, if the consent counter was already requiring unanimous consent, as this council member was claiming, why would they need to add it to the statute? I can provide the link, if anybody wants to know, to House Bill 103. They wanted to add to statute 74204, quote, "item D. Any action containing more than one action or decision, such as in consent counter or consent agenda, shall be passed only by unanimous consent, with every voting member in agreement. If the vote is not unanimous, then each item shall be voted on separately as individual action items." Again, why the need to add that if, as the council member had been claiming on the record during meetings, that unanimous consent was already required? When they couldn't get support for House Bill 103, even when claiming that it was needed because a mayor was trying to silence a council member, it couldn't get support. So they went to a senator with the same claim. The senator crafted what became House Bill 172, which added to state statute 74-204 a long sentence that mandated that a single council member could remove an item from the consent counter. Again, why would they need to add it if it was already, as this council member was asserting, required? Notice the wording in the sentence that they put, that they added to it. Providing the agenda items are not ordinances, fees, resolutions, or items requiring more than a simple majority of the members present. Again, even now, the consent counter is not necessary for unanimous consent. All council members historically have spoken to the mayor prior to posting of the agenda and asked for any items of concern to be moved to action or discussion prior to the meeting. It's a simple matter of council member communicating, like all council members. When the mayor calls for the consent counter, the mayor always asks for any comment or discussion. So all council members already have the opportunity to voice anything they wish. Nobody, as was claimed, is silencing anyone. There is all the transparency that you can want. There are all kinds of claims to keep big government out of local city business. This bill infringes on Hayden's local autonomy, okay? Hayden has been operating by resolution since its inception without problems. There has been respect for the process and communication, which has served the process. Yes, this is now part of the statute, so we don't really have any other choice. It isn't really that big a deal, but if we want to go this route, let's expect calls for point of order if those wanting to remove items wander off into political or personal ideology during discussions of those items removed. It's really very simple. Communicate with the mayor, as we all do, before the meeting, to move items that you feel need to be action or discussion. Don't wait until the meetings to grandstand. I'll give that to Abby, please, and have it added to the minutes.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I think the bill is a common sense, best practices bill that was passed unanimously by the Idaho State Legislature, and it benefits every jurisdiction in the state of Idaho, and it speaks for itself, and I don't believe that the resolution here is, is really necessary because the, the bill is pretty clear about how consent agenda should be treated. Thank you.
Yeah, we did add some things that we thought would provide clarity for council. That's why we, that, that was another reason to stick it in there. Any other comments on the resolution? Any other comments on the resolution? Anyone want to make a motion?
All right, I'll do it, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Tom. I believe there's a sample.
I motion that we adopt this resolution acknowledging House Bill 172 requirements relating to the use of consent agendas for city council meetings. Is that okay?
Fine. Okay. Any?
Get it right?
It's good enough, yeah.
Okay.
Are there any comments on the motion being made? May we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to reports. Lisa, City Administrator, Calendar Review.
A couple of things. Obviously, we've been quite busy with audit and budget corresponding together this last few weeks, so appreciate, and why I acknowledge Jen's, Garringer, our finance director's level of effort that went into getting us where we need to, as well as Tony's level of effort. Both did an incredible amount of work, so I want council to understand that even though, you know, we say these things, I want you to know how much it really was a lift and how well they've achieved the goal of getting us to where we are today with our audit, and look forward to bringing you a 24 audit before December, so we can get out of that ritual of being delayed, so.
Lisa, now, Tony says that 24 is due Monday. Overtime, it's authorized.
That's to be the nine-month rule. We don't actually start getting penalized by the state tax commission by that. I mean, restriction of our sales tax revenue until after the 31st of December. So, we, our goal is to try to meet that deadline well ahead of that, and then be primed for the 25 audit. So, I just want to make sure that publicly, we get a chance to thank those that lived the severe lift, so thank you both. As far as a couple of updates to the council, you should have received an email from the clerk about the benches. We did receive those, so if you get a chance, you can come by and take a look. They're being housed behind a fence right now, so we can ensure their safety, but she did map out kind of the next steps related to the process for getting those benches installed.
Where are they located?
They're being housed on city property right now, behind a fence, a security fence.
Which property?
City property.
Like here?
Yes.
Okay, not in the new facility?
No.
Okay, thank you.
The newsletters, we did receive those, I believe, today or yesterday. Days are blurring together, so those should be going out in the mail pretty soon. Looking forward to seeing those hit your mailbox at a time soon. We do have two workshops coming up, one Thursday this week, which is to do the remainder of the budget for fiscal year '26. Excited to tell you that right now, at this moment, we have a balanced budget. I expect that we will see some changes happen between now and when the full adoption of that budget comes forward, related to the things that we are waiting to hear from. In particular, it's going to be our new construction values and our contract with the sheriff's office, and then on the sewer side of things, it'll be really what Harbs does regarding their budget, so those will be placeholders. On June 30th, which is Monday, we have another workshop. This is the combined workshop with planning and zoning regarding the comprehensive plan work. So, those are the two upcoming workshops, and we're looking forward to seeing you all there and to participate. Happy to answer any questions, should you have any, but that's my date.
Go ahead. Yep. Can you say, or I take it maybe from a comment you made, is the contract with the sheriff completed, or?
I was going to talk to that.
You are going to?
Yeah, that's all right.
He's going to talk to it later.
Do you want me, do you want to take it from there, or do you want to wait to see if there's any other questions for me?
Yeah, I'll just wait till it hits the mayor council, if that's okay.
Happy to answer any other questions.
We have some events coming up this month.
Probably do, but I've been so focused on budget, I lost track of what day it is, so.
Fair enough.
I'm sure if there's somebody here who knows what those dates are.
What's that?
Movie night?
Yeah, we got movie night coming up.
You'll see it on the calendar, there's a couple of dates for, is it this week? No, next, yeah, tomorrow and Friday. I mean, I'd like to think that our workshops are quite the event, too, so I'm hoping you'll want to come to those.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening. Anything to report tonight?
Nothing.
Thanks for keeping Hayden safe, I appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to mayor council reports. Does any council member wish to make a report regarding a board or something like that they sit on?
Yeah, last Thursday, I guess it was, I sat in on the Harbs regular monthly meeting, and I think I brought this up before, about a lot of things, but as far as the people, the patrons, the citizens of, in this case, Hayden and Hayden Lake, in this small degree, the county, really need to be made aware, because I think most probably aren't aware of what's going on in relationship to the situation, and it's a multi-baceted issue with dissolution that we're going through, but primarily what happened on Thursday was really concerning, and I believe it's putting the city and citizens of Hayden Lake in a very precarious position, should there be any kind of major failure or malfunction with the processing and treatment, and even collection. One of the entities has several items that they are refusing to, they call it their line in the sand, and probably the one that's most concerning is a facilities, a plant facilities plant, and it's been put off one year, and they want to put it off a second year now. And that means that, for the most part, the treatment plant does not have a detailed plan of what they need to improve over the next couple of years, next two or three years. And again, we have a major malfunction, and you have a real problem, and along with that, the increases to the replacement fund, which is like a savings account, for those items that, should they have a major failure, there may not be funds to pay for those repairs, and whatever may be needed, and I think it's putting us, it's putting everybody in a real precarious situation, that I think the public, and especially the patrons of the district, really need to be made aware of and have an understanding, so that's that.
Thank you, Ed. Anyone else?
Again, one thing, Mr. Mayor. It was brought to my attention that I failed to inform council and the mayor on a decision that was made with KMPO, not this month, but the month previously, where, that was discussed and about how KMPO is going to go forward with whether it continued to lease its office space, or whether to purchase. And the reason why this conversation came up was that rental rates are expected to go up significantly, and so KMPO's staff presented to us the fact that if we, if they continued to lease, that the cost burden on the member municipalities would also increase. So, the trade-off was to purchase office space, and that would be a combination of taking out a mortgage as well as a down payment. And at the, that was the May meeting, we authorized the KMPO staff to do the further negotiations for office space. This month, at the meeting, I missed because of a scheduling conflict. That discussion was closed, and the remainder of the board authorized KMPO to purchase office space, which would be a combination of a down payment and a mortgage. And as a result, all the member municipalities were levied an amount that would contribute to the down payment. That amount for Hayden was $2,246, and so, in summary, what it is, is pay now, and the expectation is that the city of Hayden will pay a lot less in the future if we were to continue, if KMPO was to continue leasing office space. So, I think I got it all out there. Did I miss anything? I know that you and I, and the three of us have been talking a lot, I think that hits it. I mean, obviously, the bill will come before council to be paid, so nothing's being done untransparently.
Councilman Schaefer, do you know where the property is?
I do not. All right, I, let me put it to you, I have it in record with the KMPO packet that I received, and if you wish to know that, I can.
Next meeting, I'm just kind of curious.
Question, please. Oh, is that going to be an annual fee that we'll be paying?
No, no.
Just at one time?
You know, just, you know, when you buy your house, and you're going to put, you know, whatever.
You said mortgage, I'm thinking.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We will be, going forward, the member municipalities will be helping to pay for the mortgage, but the expectation is that that will be less than if KMPO continued to lease the space.
So, the $2,000, whatever's basically part of the down payment?
That's the down payment, not the mortgage.
So, will it be a 30-year mortgage, or, you know?
I don't know the answer to that, but I will get you the answer to that.
Thank you.
I could send out the email that was sent by Glenn Miles to council.
Any other questions for Tom? Okay. Does any other council member have a report to make?
I'd like to make one. I had the pleasure of going to AIC, the Association of Idaho City's annual meeting in Boise. I hadn't been down there for two years, and I look forward to it, because not only do we have seminars, you get to select of what you think you can learn from, or that's of interest to you, but just the interaction with other mayors and council members that you get to know, because you sit and have breakfast or lunch with them, and ask them about how they're doing things. And I think that that's the more valuable part that I gleaned from going there, and I want to share a few things that I think are well worth the time going down there. The mayor of Nampa, which is a pretty large city now, I don't know how big it is, she got up and, we had a roundtable with the large city mayors, and we're considered a large city, because like 85% of all cities in Idaho are under 5,000 people, so we're a big city in comparison. But what she said is that we in Nampa are the first in the state to have a utility impact fee, and that caught my interest, because I wanted to find, what are the funding sources that are out there that can help our city maintain and continue with the growth? Obviously, we're behind the curve with growth, and so she introduced me to their Ted Publix work, I've got his telephone number, his email, he emailed me, and he's willing to discuss exactly what they did and how much, but I mean, I love that idea.
I already pulled their report, and I'm reading it. I think our biggest challenge right now is that we don't own a big portion of that utility that isn't ours, so once we get through dissolution, it might be possible.
Okay, but I thought I was well worth it just to find that diamond. Now, the other thing is that there was a seminar put on by Clearwater Partners or something like that, and they were a consultant for the Eastern Idaho Sewer District, and I may not have that complete. And this is where there were several cities and sewer districts that all had to go together to enlarge their capacity to be under one roof and to be one entity, and they had to have a $34 million upgrade to their sewer plant, and so they were talking about the different funding with bonds and such, but what caught my interest was this, because they said that at the time of plat, now, I don't know if that's final plat or what plat, that they collect all of the cap fees at once. So, if you have a 200 or 300 lot subdivision, they say that legally you can collect all of the cap fees at that point, which puts a heavy burden on to the developer, but then they say that it's better to be proactive to have that money to work with to put in infrastructure than reactive, where now we get, as it works now, is that the cap fee is paid at the time that the building permit is taken, and that could be a lot by a lot, you know, each lot is doing that, but versus collecting, say, 300 lot cap fees at one time. Now, I guess there's a concern about being able to provide what you say you will be able to do when you collect all that money upfront, because the way we have it set up now is that when you pay a cap fee to hook into the sewer system, we don't give you a guarantee. If it's available, you can hook up. So, I don't know if we would be obligated at that point if they paid that full, all the cap fees on one subdivision, whether at the time they want to hook up, you better have everything in place. So, I think that's worth discussing, that may be something we can look at. Now, along those same thoughts is if you can collect legally a cap fee at the time of plat, what about impact fees? Could you collect all the impact fees at the time of plat, rather than at the time when the lot is, we do collect our impact fees at the time the building permit is taken out, is that true? So, the question is, could we collect all the impact fees upfront at the time of plat? And so, these are all funding ideas that, I don't know if it'll work for us, but I want to find ways that we can have funds to work with to be able to provide the infrastructure that we need.
Thanks, Matt. Danny, anything?
I was just, I had heard that there was going to be a meeting with the county commissioners this morning.
I'm going to talk to that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll go last. You got one more?
Are you going to bring up that house?
That's future, future agenda.
Next on the agenda.
Next on the agenda.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's okay. For council's awareness, Lisa and I met with the Board of County Commissioners this morning. The subject was the law enforcement contract, and the meeting, I believe, was on, is on YouTube. Is it?
I don't know if it's YouTube, or if it's, whatever they're streaming.
I think they normally do. I recommend if council is interested in learning where we are in the process of negotiating our fiscal year 2026 contract, which is a complete reboot, it's not the same contract with new numbers, that you give it a watch. I want to, let's see, next thing is, I have my quarterly PAC meeting. I haven't really been giving reports on that, and I guess I'd like some feedback from council. Do you need that? So, the Panhandle Area Council does small business loans. Honestly, there's nothing that directly impacts the city government of Hayden, so there really hasn't been anything. I think we're getting our audit this quarter, but honestly, it's way out of our swim lane as far as what we do. But again, if you tell me there's some specific information you'd like out of the PAC meetings, I'm happy to report that, and you can just send me an email if you've got specifics. The last thing I have is Thursday, we have coffee with the deputies, 9 o'clock in the morning, Super 1, and certainly, it's an invitation for all of the public to attend that would like to ask our deputies questions, or maybe thank them for their service.
Every Thursday?
No, it's just this Thursday, it's the second event. The first one was a good half a year ago, is that fair? We had the Village Bakery, it was a great time.
Were the Village people there?
No, no Village people, just bakers. All right, moving on, we have a request for any future agenda items from council. Ed?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to put it on a future agenda to look at, I don't know if it's auxiliary building, or shop codes, whatever it may be, related to size, height, setbacks, proportionality related to the size of these buildings compared to the size of the home itself. I saw one of these buildings the other day, and if I were the owner of the home to which it backed up on, I would be. I would be very upset because you can't tell me that if I were to go sell my house, because I know if I walked into this house to buy it and I saw that behind there, I'd walk out the door right away. And it's, it looks like, this particular looked like a commercial building in a residential neighborhood. So I think I'd like to have an agenda, maybe, I don't know if we end up going through workshop or whatever, to look at our codes for these type of buildings.
Ed, would it be better if, would council like to task Planning and Zoning to review the codes associated with, what do they call it, auxiliary buildings or...
Accessory.
Accessory buildings, thank you. Accessory buildings, and then bring forth recommendations for council?
It goes to Planning and Zoning anyway.
Right, that's...
Well, start the process because, you know, to, obviously, make a presentation, whatever. But again, what I saw, and I personally don't think it's right.
Okay.
And I think something, it needs to be addressed.
Okay. Anyone else, future agenda items?
Yes, I'm, I've had constituents approach me about the speed limits on Government Way, especially around miles and Government Way, because it goes from 25 to 35 at an intersection where there's no stop signs or signals yet. So I would like to maybe look at that and see if there's a way we could make that intersection a little safer before we are able to get a signal up.
Yep, that subject's come up, and I don't know, it was high on the priority list, so it still might be on the list. I know we discussed, there's the graduation of speeds as you go north on Government. I know in the vicinity where the used car lots are, there's some industrial areas where they pull out, and they allege that there are a number of times where there's a lot of close calls. Deputy, do we have many accidents up there where people actually hit each other?
Usually during the rush hours in the mornings or in the evenings, we'll get a couple. But it is, it's an issue from what I see.
So I know it's on our work list.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Have a good night, drive safe.